Hey, I'd like to call the Mentor City Council Work Session for October 1st, 2024 to order. We'll begin with the Pledge to the Flag. Okay. Julie, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Krieger.
Here.
Mr. Marn.
Here.
Mr. Blake.
Here.
Mr. Donovan.
Here.
Mrs. Dowling.
Here.
Mr. Freeman.
Here.
Mr. Kurtzner.
Here.
Okay. Counsel, administration, tonight, we have a companion work session to the work session we had a few weeks ago pertaining to the power outages following the storm of August 6th. This work session is being televised so that people in the community can follow along and hopefully get a better understanding of what happens in events like this and potentially what we could do to at least partially mitigate some of the future problems from these storms because they seem to come pretty regularly every year. So tonight, we have two representatives from First Energy joining us. We have Wendy Zeeley, who is our Regional External Affairs Person, who Counsel always calls when we have problems. And with her presenting tonight also is Frank McGraw, Manager of Forestry Services for First Energy. So I'd like to have you guys come up to the podium. You've got a presentation to present to us, and if you could introduce yourselves one by one, that would be great, and we'll let you have it.
Thank you, Counsel. Appreciate the invitation for tonight. As Counsel President mentioned, my name is Wendy Zeeley. I'm the Regional External Affairs Contact for the City of Mentor. Again, I know everyone here have been around for unfortunately a long time, or fortunately, you guys decide. But we do appreciate the opportunity to talk about the storm that happened on August 6th. So I am going to reference some of my notes. Feel free to stop and ask me questions in between. And then Frank McGraw will talk the last four slides regarding our vegetation policies. Okay, there we go. So while my presentation today is focused on Ohio, I want to mention that over 627,500 customers, First Energy customers, lost service due to the severe storms that swept across Northeast Ohio, Pennsylvania, Maryland, West Virginia, and New Jersey on August 6th. This powerful and historic storm system brought strong winds exceeding over 80 miles an hour in parts of Ohio and Western Pennsylvania. As well as here in Ohio, we had five tornadoes with over 110 mile an hour winds that tore through Greater Cleveland, and one specifically impacting Lake County. We also experienced a macroburst, which in a wide area of damaging straight-line winds of 70 to 90 miles an hour covering an area roughly 225 square miles, 15 miles wide by 15 miles long, in Cuyahoga, Lake, and Geoga Counties. While the National Weather Service and our own First Energy Company meteorologists were expecting a potential for seasonal thunderstorm in this area on that date, the severe magnitude and widespread nature of these storms were not predicted. Nearly 500,000 customers in Ohio lost power due to the storms on August 6th. The Greater Cleveland area was the hardest hit, with more than 353,000 customers out across Ashtabula, Cuyahoga, Geoga, Lake, and Lorraine Counties. First Energy updated their online map tools and were put to the test during these storms, but were very successful in providing information throughout. I hope many of you use that tool throughout our restoration process for referencing. The map was used by many of our social media and many of the TV stations as well. Sorry, my fingers are not working on this. Come on. There we go. So at first hint of the August 6th storms, we activated our storm response plan, which allows us to put additional resources, including contractor crews and personnel from our mutual assistant organizations on standby, and mobilized personnel to the hardest-hit areas following the event. Our Ohio electric utilities operated approximately prepared based on the initial forecast, ensuring coverage and staffing plans were in place. First Energy's emergency operation, as we refer to it as the EOC, was in a steady-state monitoring posture. Our EOC had been engaged in situational awareness activities with our mutual assistant partners, and First Energy did not send any company personnel or contractor resources to assist with the tropical storm Debbie that was coming up on the coast. The EOC was also monitoring the storm impact prediction model, as well as our internal meteorology alerts as part of our standard protocol. I apologize, this would go a lot faster if my fingers worked on getting that to the next slide. So about 8,200 personnel from our company contractors and mutual assistant organizations were engaged in the restoration. First Energy crews were in our communities when the storm arrived, and more than 3,000 additional workers joined the effort in less than the 24 hours. All of the First Energy Ohio crews were ready to respond when the storm hit on August 6th. And again, as I want to reiterate, no employees nor resources were sent to the tropical storm Debbie restoration efforts. First Energy personnel were joined by outside assistance from 17 states, as represented here on the graphic of the slide. Approximately 6,000 of those were working in the Illuminating Company territory. And at this time, I'd like to say a special thanks to Ken Flipiak. We had enacted our staging site process, and our first staging site was in the East Lake Service Territory across from the Captain Stadium. But due to the severity of the storm, we had to look for an alternate location for additional crews that were coming in, and these staging sites were critical to get the job packages out to all of our foreign crews that were coming in. And I was able to work with Ken to identify the Great Lakes Mall as a temporary location, and really appreciate that support. Post-impact adjustments quickly occurred in Ohio after we realized the extent of the damage caused by the storms, and we fully activated our Emergency Operations Center. To minimize downtime and allow for manageable spans of control, the impacted area within the Illuminating Company was divided into four zones, and our scalable incident command structure allowed us to strategically place experienced operation leadership to allow flexible, tailored to the specific damage footprint. So as stated earlier, there were five tornadoes, one that rolled through Kirtland and through Chesterland, and then four others primarily in the west side of our CEI footprint. This allowed for more accurate and targeted daily work plan process that bolstered information sharing and resource management activities. Each zone had an Operation Section Chief, which were held by the Directors of our operations in Ohio. Each zone, all support branches were fully staffed and mobilized to assist in the effort. Material staging sites were also quickly established, as I just previously mentioned. City of Mentor and the Great Lakes Mall was a material staging site for all of our foreign crews to come through and pick up their job packages, pick up the necessary materials, and go out to the job. And they went back to those locations as well, once they were completed with the job. The First Energy restoration model is dynamic and expands from the dispatch of crews by the Distribution Control Center, which is based currently out of Brexville, and to dispatch the crews by other organizations such as hazards, overhead lines, forestry, and service throughout the distribution footprint. During the first 48 hours of the storm, our efforts were focused on responding and making safe more than 430 911-reported emergencies, 460 road closures, and thousands of customer-reported downed power lines. This was coupled with a robust effort to reconfigure and restore 21 subtransmission lines that provided source power for many of our distribution substations. Following the safety of the public and continuity of the electrical system efforts, we shifted our focus then to the large commercial outages in parallel with restoring priority-critical facilities such as 911 dispatch centers and hospitals. This large restoration event included restoring 341 distribution circuit lockouts, restoring over 8,800 outage incidents, and responding to over 24,000 non-outage-damaged locations, specifically around a lot of the tree damage that happened throughout the footprint. And most of the outage, as discussed, was caused by tree damage or tornado wind damage impacting our facilities. I'm going to get this one of these days. And as you can see on this graph, power was restored to 85% of the customers within 100 hours of this historic weather event. Half of the customers impacted by the storm were restored within 51 hours. This huge feat was given the extent of the damage and the number of safety locations that we also responded to within the first days. Customer restoration was as follows: 28% in 24 hours, 47% in 48, 50% in 51, 85% in 100 hours, and 95% by August 11th at 6:00 PM. And a few other additional restoration numbers to give you an overview of the materials that we used during this restoration effort, which these numbers do include both Ohio Edison and the Illuminating Company. So this was our Ohio footprint because currently First Energy has moved to an all-state footprint. We had 75 miles of power lines, 670 poles that we restored, 2,670 crossarms, 359 transformers. Public outreach, that would be me, directly with the Counsel. Our external affairs team, myself, and then I also had a counterpart who covered for me when I had to leave the country midway through, so I do appreciate the support that you provided to him. We began communicating with public officials as the storm impacted the area, providing proactive messaging and seeking to understand critical community needs, including EMA escalations of road closures and critical facilities, which would include pump stations. I think I talked to every fire chief the first 48 hours with regards to downed power lines, fires, things like that. So it was a very busy 48 hours. I've been here for 28 years, and this is the most historical storm that I've ever worked on besides Storm Sandy personally. So the team provided multiple updates to public officials and first responders each day of the restoration effort, including information on the restoration process and progress being made each day. External affairs also continue to receive inbound requests for information and escalation during the storm and routed to the appropriate staff. So again, most of those came through many of my fire chiefs during that time. The team used broadcast emails, individual emails, received many phone calls, text messaging, and tried to remain engaged with all of our key stakeholders throughout the storm to at least provide information so that you can provide it to your residents. Obviously, we know communication is key. So I still encourage Counsel members to remind the constituents to always report the power outage and have an outage number directly tagged to their billing account. It's helpful for outage history reporting. It's also helpful to find out if we have a chronic issue with regards to underground cable outages, overhead interference, things like that. So we always encourage the residents to contact our outage and to use our online mapping tools, because again, those tools are also used by social media and all the news outlets. So now, that is my information. I'm going to turn it over to Frank McGraw. He's our Manager of Forestry Services to discuss our last four slides, and then I'll stay up here for questions.
Thanks, Wendy. Yeah, good evening, Counsel. Like Wendy said, my name is Frank McGraw. I'm the Manager of Forestry Services for the Illuminating Company. I'm going to talk a little bit about the storm of August 6th, and I'm going to go into some of our cycle trimming that we do here in Mentor and really all across CEI. So this storm, due to its size and scale, this storm, due to its size and scale, really brought a lot of unique challenges to CEI. The volume of uprooted whole trees and large tree limb failures was really just catastrophic. Our professional contractors did an outstanding job with safety. We had no safety incidents over the whole event, and really using their specialty equipment to clear the roads and clear our facilities for our line department. I want to touch on some key metrics, which really highlight the effort and impact vegetation management has to our overall restoration activities. Our forestry staff dispatched over 4,900 events or jobs during the event. We engaged 884 professionals from across the First Energy footprint, as well as 165 mutual aid contractors. Looking at some of our outage metrics, we do require a cause cause winners outages, so it's either going to be an on right-of-way or off right-of-way tree or limb, off right-of-way tree or limb failure, or secondary service. In this storm, almost 80% of all of our tree-related CMI, which is customer minutes interrupted, almost 80% were caused by off right-of-way tree or limb failure. So trees outside of our 30-foot right-of-way caused 80% of the tree damage. Lastly, after the storm, we do a post-storm patrol. We patrolled over 4,000 miles across Ohio Edison and CEI and identified and mitigated 423 hazards. So if there's any questions about the vegetation and storm, or I can move on to kind of our cycle trimming. So these next two slides, we pulled just information from our website that Mentor residents can go in and find this information on there. Trees really are their leading cause of power outages. It's really just unsafe when trees come in contact with our power lines, either through growth or through storm activity. We employ professional arborists that assess each location and tree and look for the best method to control that vegetation, which in urban areas usually means like a bucket truck or manually climbing the tree to trim for four years of clearance. When we get into rural areas, we can sometimes use other control methods such as herbicide and mechanical means of trimming. So homeowners' rights and responsibilities. Really, we're able and we have the right to trim any vegetation that's interfering with our conductors and with providing safe and reliable electric services, which is really our sole goal when we're doing vegetation work. We do not, however, have the right to remove any trees or vegetation without the customer's permission that's on their property, even if it's inside of our right-of-way. Like I said, our goal is solely to provide safe and reliable electric service, and sometimes to accomplish that, we have to trim trees. And I know that doesn't always look the best, but our goal is to provide safe and reliable electric service and get four years of clearance. When storm damage does happen to trees, we do remove the broken limbs from our conductors or our equipment, but that debris is left on the customer's property for them to clean So we're on a four-year cycle. When we do our regulatory trimming, we're on a four-year cycle, and we trim for four years of clearance. Four years of clearance is different by species. So if we have a silver maple, which is a fast-growing species, we might need 10 to 15 feet of clearance from our top primary wire, which is usually either 13,200 volts or 4 KV, 4,000 volts. If it's a blue spruce, we might only need a foot and a half of clearance to keep that clear for the next four years. If it's a hard maple, we might need four feet of clearance. So we do trim by species and by NCA 300 standards. Our professional work planners notify all customers before we get into the neighborhood to trim by leaving door cards or speaking with the customers. The work planners look at the right-of-way, which is our 30 feet, so it's 15 feet from either side of the pole line, and what trees are going to affect our top primary wire within the next four years, and those are the trees we target. We do look for damaged and dying trees inside of our right-of-way, and if we see any damaged, obviously dying trees inside of our right-of-way that are a hazard to our equipment, we're going to mitigate that risk. We don't really do thorough, I don't want to say thorough, but we don't do outside of our right-of-way inspections. But if we do see a tree outside of our right-of-way that's dying or dead or an obvious hazard to our equipment, we will mitigate that at that time, or plan to do that. We trim for secondary and service lines by eliminating mechanical strain or getting four feet of clearance on pole-to-pole secondary. So a service line going from a pole to the customer's house will just eliminate mechanical strain on that if anything's pushing it or pushing it out of alignment, or even rubbing on it, which would cause some strain. Pole-to-pole secondaries, so that's from one pole to another, secondary voltage, we'll trim that for four feet of clearance. And just a little bit of information, you know, 74% of all veg-related CMI, so on our regular, non-major storm days, 74% of that damage is caused by off right-of-way tree and limb failure. Majority of these outages are caused by broken live limbs and broken whole trees, either uprooting or breaking at the trunk. As far as Mentor goes, trimming, in 2024, we have one substation to trim in Mentor. We'll be in here probably early November to get that trimming done. And then the majority of the trimming for Mentor is done in 2025, so every four years. But 2025 is when this has happened. We have six substations that affect the City of Mentor that we'll be working on next year, starting in January. As far as, we were talking, or before this, we were talking a little bit about a homeowner's responsibility. We do take care of everything within that right-of-way, that 30-foot right-of-way. And something that a homeowner can do outside of that 30-foot right-of-way is just look at their property. Look at their trees. See if they notice anything that us walking down the right-of-way might not see. And they can call our 800 number, and we'll send an arborist out to take a look at it. And then they can advise the customer on it's something that we need to handle right-of-way, or it's something that would be customer responsibility, that is an imminent threat. That's all I got.
So again, thank you. Do you have any questions regarding the storm or any of our vegetation maintenance policies and procedures?
Thank you to both of you for coming tonight. Mr. McGraw, just to follow up on something that you just said about 30 seconds ago, where a customer who has a tree that's outside of your right-of-way can call First Energy, and your arborist will come out and look at that tree. Could you speak a little bit more about that and whose responsibility it would be if, say, for instance, the tree did have some sort of fault, and it would cause a potential outage next year when we have the same storm come through? Do you guys pay for that tree to be mitigated, or is that always going to be a customer responsibility?
So if it's an imminent threat, like it's going to fall, like we know it's going to be a problem imminently, we're going to take care of that. With a lot of these trees, it's very hard to tell that they're damaged, so that's why I really say they need to call into the 800 number. We will send an arborist out there to inspect the tree. And if it's something that I don't think is an imminent threat, but is a possible problem, that would be the customer's responsibility. But if it's an imminent threat, that's something we would take care of. And that's really determined by the arborist there.
So sort of as a follow-up to that, in one of your slides, you said that 80% of the minutes of outage in this last storm were caused by trees outside of your right-of-way.
Right.
And that begs the question, what can we do as a community to try to mitigate that? I mean, do you come across other communities that are proactive, that are saying, you know what, these storms with a lot of our mature trees that are on people's private property, can we do something to identify those trees that maybe are just to the west of a power line? And you could just tell by looking at that tree, the next time you have a storm like this, there is a potential for that tree, even though it looks like it may be okay. Are there any other communities that you know of that are proactive on identifying trees like that, and hopefully not having that tree bringing down a power line and making the whole neighborhood go dark for days?
That would be for me. And I am aware of other communities that do that. Again, we don't monitor that. That's not our responsibility. We'll respond to concerns, just like Frank had said. But it's really the property owners to take their own initiative to review the vegetation of how healthy or unhealthy their species of tree is on their property, and to be aware of where their power lines are. That is a key thing that we do with our live-wire safety training. We've done it a lot with our fire personnel, but we've also done Kids' Safety Days to make awareness of where the trees are. And we work with a lot of different organizations, 501(c)(3) for planting new trees. And number one thing is to be aware of where you're planting new trees, because they might be small when you plant them, but they all grow tall and big. And so again, all we can do is encourage residents and property owners to review their property, review the healthiness of their vegetation, and work accordingly. We do have, on our First Energy Forestry page, various contractors, certified contractors, that are able to work around energized lines to decrease having to take a shutdown to do property-owned maintenance. So they can refer to our website for different contractors that may want to come out and do some type of consulting for their property.
So just for clarification, the average pole is like 35 feet high?
I would say 45, 50, yeah.
And your power lines are at the very top of that pole, right? Because there's a lot on there. There's all sorts of...
Systematically speaking, we're always at the top. Then there may be communications, excuse me, cable in the middle, and then communications on the bottom on a typical standard pole.
AT&amp;T lines are down here, but you guys are always at the top.
We're at the top. And it could be a 2-voltage pole. So as Frank mentioned, most of the City of Mentor has distribution lines off the 13,200 KV circuit, but you have many large industrial customers within the City of Mentor that are on a subtransmission feed, which is a 36,000 or different higher. We call that a subtransmission voltage service. So you could have certain pole lines. Off the top of my head, I'm pretty sure Heasley Road has a subtransmission and distribution circuitry on one single pole line going down Heasley. So depends on where you're at.
Is there anywhere on your website where circuit mapping is identified? Because that is one of the questions I get a lot. It's like, you know, my neighborhood goes out, but yet the people across the street have their power on, but in my neighborhood, I'm out. Is there anywhere...
It is a request that we received, but unfortunately, for security reasons, we do not provide any electrical distribution mapping. That was something that happened a couple decades ago in regards to security purposes for reporting purposes. So the answer is no.
Got to take a guess.
It's a good question.
Thank you. Counsel?
Yeah, one question. Frank, we have a number of neighborhoods in the City of Mentor where the lines run in the backyards. How do you guys handle those?
Those are handled the same way. So we still have our 30-feet right-of-way, 15-feet to either side of the pole line, and it's handled the same way if they're on the street.
Okay.
So vegetation maintenance, but as well as electrical maintenance, we have to use backyard diggers occasionally for electrical maintenance. So yes, and that's where it's critical that his team basically will reach out to the resident to let them know, hey, we're coming back here in your backyard, sometimes with our big trucks, but it's the same process.
Okay.
Thank you.
Matt, did you have a question?
I guess, Frank, if a customer calls you on the inspection of a tree they feel is going to be a danger to the wires, what's like your percentage of, it's a hard question, but your percentage of going there and saying, yeah, we're going to pull that tree? I mean, do you have, is your crew, is your crew big enough? Do you have enough people for this kind of situation? We're just trying to sort of figure out, how many people do you have that you could send out when this happens? You know, people are going to watch this and start calling us and you and say, hey, I have a tree I want, and you're going to come out and diagnose it and say, yeah, we're going to pull that tree, or we're not going to pull it. You know, I mean, what's your percentage of?
I don't know that I can give you a percentage of ones that we do something with, because it is going to be case by case. It's going to be if it's an imminent threat or something that we think is not an imminent threat. But I have eight specialists that work under me, and we have 15 contracted work planners that do the work planning. They also are some that go out and inspect some of these customer calls. And when a customer calls in about a situation like this, we usually get to it within a week. We get somebody out there within the week to look at the tree. If it's something that's broken, already broken, and an obvious hazard that the customer states that, we'll be out there that same day.
And I guess this is something maybe I should know, but I'm going to ask you anyway. What is your jurisdiction? How far are you spread out? And how many people are you covering with your personal job?
We go from Conyote, basically Pennsylvania border, all the way west to Avon Lake, and then south into like Chardon, Strongsville, all the Illuminating Company footprint.
Go a little farther south. Ashtabula County goes up to the Andover, south to Andover, as well as Ohio Edison. But his territory is, you're right, Chardon.
Right. And we hit, like I said, I have eight specialists that work for me right now and those fifteen work planners, which are which are the ones that can can respond to customer inquiries or requests.
Thanks, Frank.
Scott?
Simple question. And we, yeah, we we get these all the time. Common street light.
This is me. Yes.
If the light is out, should we have a process that a city of Mentor resident follows?
So first process is to either call the one-eight-hundred line, one-eight-hundred-five-eight-nine-three-one-zero-one and report it. Or we also have an online street light reporting. It's the same process that you use to report your power outage. It's just that there's a specific section, and I'd be more than happy to to provide a link or a almost a guide that they can put for for the council to put in, you know, on the on the community webpage or whatnot, but report it on. Our process, we attempt to attempt, I am going to, based on what our current workload is, is to repair those street lights between three to five business days. However, there are there have been some circumstances with some supply chain issues, specifically with LED lighting, in which the city is a upon-failure community. We've run into a little bit of that. But if there is a chronic issue, and I am working on two of them now with Matt Schwiker in regards to trying to get those resolved. But if there is an issue where it's not getting addressed, your your staff's been excellent to get get that information directly to me.
And off-topic real quick, but I want to personally thank you for all your help and involvement with our new cell tower at six fifteen to ninety. We couldn't have got it done without you. And I just learned just the other day that it's going to be operational for all the residents in South Mentor and definitely the nursing homes and senior population in South Mentor that's going to be operational next week or two. So I appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Oh, thank you.
Couldn't have done it without you.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. Wendy, I have a couple of questions, but I want to start with one on your slide presentation, if I can. First of all, I do want to publicly acknowledge that Wendy Zeeley and your colleague that that supported you after-
Victor Coleman.
Right.
Give him a shout out.
Very, very helpful, very accessible during the whole outage, and we appreciate that. I mean, there's a lot that really was unresolvable for a while, but we do appreciate the updates. If you go back to your presentation under the slide Restoration Overview, Vegetation Management Impact, yeah. So if I'm understanding that correctly, the tree CMIs are those minutes the customers are out due to a tree falling on a line, right? I find it interesting that in the in the Illuminating Company's area, only twenty-six percent of the area was caused of the outage minutes were caused by tree failures. What was is that, am I reading that correctly?
So yes, you are. However, keep in mind that we had to separate, I believe, and I'll get clarification on this, but we had to separate those numbers based on tornado damage, which majority of it was wind damage that may have brought down a tree, but I'll get clarification on that.
I'm just wondering what the other seventy-four percent generally would account for. So is it damage that at the substations, things like that?
Absolutely. So again, as I previously mentioned, I don't have to go back to some of my notes, but-
Because it's opposite what Ohio Edison experience territory was.
And and their outage was substantially smaller than our footprint damage. But again, we had substation, subtransmission and distribution substations damaged, equipment damaged from the high winds of the tornadoes. We had various road closures, critical facilities, again, that were it was actually infrastructure down due to the tornadoes that ripped our equipment down. So again, I believe the separation for that, but I'll get clarification and email you back.
And I raised it because I anticipated that was your answer on that, and I think it's important for our residents to understand that it wasn't just fallen trees that took out the power, it was significant damage to your grid and in the components.
It was it was equipment damage due to the high winds of a hundred and ten miles an hour. And again, again, I'm not saying that trees were were a large part of it, but there was a lot of infrastructure damage due to the storm itself.
Can I follow up on that, Mr. President? So at our last meeting, Wendy, we had a chance to talk a little bit about the system itself and some of the things that the the city could do to try to address some of these concerns for the future. And one of the things that we discussed briefly was your Energize three sixty-five plan, which is on your website, and it talks about twenty-six billion dollars across the distribution and transmission system being invested between twenty twenty-four and over the next four years to upgrade to a more reliable grid and to meet future expansion. We talked a little bit about some other public, private utilities and public utilities that I brought up one in particular because I know it's got a lot of attention, that Energize New Jersey program where they're upgrading overhead power lines and putting up more durable poles, more durable, more robust wiring, looking to place wires underground when they have the opportunity. Is any of that happening in your system and specifically in Lake County?
So we actually did in twenty twenty twenty, possibly, where we've already done many of the residents already have smart meters and that have been replaced over the last few years. We also put in four communication poles as we I I presented that to your engineering team and yourself with regards to putting in in different areas so that we can have automated communication back to our Brexville system. So some of that infrastructure is already active and within and actively being used within the city of of Mentor. Any additional, I would have to get with our corporate. We did submit to the Public Utilities Commission a second phase for for First Energy. If that specifically included infrastructure, continued infrastructure improvements in the city of Mentor, I'd have to get with the people that are running that project.
I think we would all be curious to know if, you know, there's, as poles fail, and I know speed is the key for everybody that's out, we want them up and running as fast as possible. But over time, when poles are replaced, is there, you know, I know some some systems will upgrade to steel poles in the area, and I mentioned more robust or just tougher or higher gauge wiring. Is any, and I know you don't have to answer that tonight, but if if there's an opportunity to look into those type of improvements so that, you know, even if it helps lower the percentage of outages in the future, because certain areas are starting to see those more robust system improvements, I think that's something we would like to certainly know about and see if that's always looked to be a test subject for that kind of thing, right?
Understood, understood. So I am not aware of our company changing policies to install any type of metal pole infrastructure. Again, I will definitely take it up the ladder to say that this is something that the city of Mentor is inquiring about. We do and are required by the Public Utilities Commission to have pole inspections, what that specific process is. I don't know, are you aware of that? But we have a lot of that. And that includes our our normal transformer inspections, our pole inspections. We do circuit inspections. We have these operational inspections in place because we're mandated by the PCO. But again, an inquiry on the steel poles, I'm not, you know, I-
I'm just using that as an example.
Absolutely.
It might it might just be a thicker wooden pole. I don't I don't know.
Right. No, I understand.
I'm just kind of speculating on that. I will say that First Energy's been pretty good in the past about when we've called in significantly warped poles. I know a lot of times council members will will call those in and you've taken care of those generally over over time successfully.
And and we're sensitive to the fact that the city of Mentor wants to do a pole-on-pole replacement and not to add new poles if necessary. So I I've worked with the engineering team and the public works team over primarily the last five years to be consistent with trying to minimize any new installation of poles, but still keeping with, you know, our our normal improvement, you know, programs. So thank you.
President? Frank, are you involved with a tree remove a tree cleanup around the wires in Madison and all on Lake on Lakeshore Boulevard, I think? It was a huge undertaking. I drove by the other day, and there had to be fifteen, twenty trucks cleaning trees from wires. Is that is there any involvement with you on that? Or would that did Madison hire? You don't have you're not aware of that?
I'd have to look, but I don't I don't think so. Madison, we don't we don't get hired by the municipality, so.
Okay.
I wasn't made aware. Madison is also part of my community responsibilities and-
Yeah, it was a huge undertaking. It was probably twenty trucks, and they were going right down and cleaning the trees. And I thought maybe you guys were involved with that, but I'll try to get the name of the company.
Quick question. When new poles are installed, what is the timeframe for the old pole to be removed? I had several residents ask that question of me, and I did not know the answer.
So two-pole conditions is how we reference those situations. First Energy does create that two-pole condition for whatever the reason may be, old pole, just do a replacement, there's a bee nest, whatever. Our process, if there are other utilities on that particular pole, whether it's cable or communication or both, we send an electronic notification to the other utility stating that we have created this situation, be advised that you need to transfer your equipment over to the new pole. And then the last utility, which is usually the communications company on the bottom, that is not always the case. There are special circumstances, but most of the time, it's the lowest utility on the pole that's responsible for removal of the old pole. Because we don't have, all we're responsible for is providing that initial notification that we've created that two-pole condition. How they manage that, removal of the old pole is something that you'd have to talk to the other utility about.
Okay.
No, that's not the answer you want to-
So there's not a specific timeframe that they can expect?
I'm not aware of one. But again, I I don't know who the communications utility, there there might be multiple. But again, as I've done this in the past, if I work with AT&amp;T and they've been great with with concerns, but I think they've got the same person like myself, so you could reach out to them and they might be able to to help with some certain specific locations.
Thanks, Wendy.
You're welcome.
Wendy, you know, one thing that I have to give you guys compliments on is the fact that, like, the rest of us, we didn't realize that that August sixth storm was going to be anything other than thunderstorms coming through. But it was it was much more. But, you know, within like twenty-four hours, we started seeing those trucks from all other places rolling in. So I'm not sure what you guys do to send out the alarm and and assess your needs right-of-way. But, you know, I I go to the gym at Planet Fitness, and when the power came back on, I could go back, I saw all those trucks out there, and I I walked amongst them saying thank you, and they looked at me funny because that's probably something they do every day. Maybe not every day, but every now and then. So, you know, that system of alarm that we have a major need here, and then being able to bring all those trucks in quickly, especially when you didn't know something like that was coming. Because a lot of a lot of my residents were getting text messages that said it would be August fourteenth before power connection came. And for the most part, it was within like two or three days. So I don't really have a question.
Well, thank you for that. I'd like to make a comment about that notification for the global. So a global electronic notification went out. A couple days into the storm, our senior-level management has to review what the assessment, total assessment of the outages were and are always asked of our operations team, when when is the farthest out date that you think majority of the customers, ninety-five percent or so customers, would be back and restored? And that was that global estimated time of restoration that went out to whatever phone number residents have tagged to their account. That was the global ETR that I provided in the communications to the city with regards to giving them. But that's just the the date and time that we believe majority of the customers will come back up, anticipating and knowing that our crews are out there working on those larger outages, and majority of the customers were going to be coming up sooner. But we we feel that it's helpful for representatives like yourself that are in this situation getting phone calls about our our restoration efforts, that we try to give you something so that they can prepare. Another thing that I want to mention is that we we enacted water and ice, not only on a distribution level, but on a wholesale level, in which customers, because they were multi-day outages, anywhere from two to, I believe, seven-day outages for certain that they could obtain that. So we appreciated our support from Giant Eagle on that, as well as various communities where we actually deployed, City of Mentor being one of them, where we did a wholesale unit, wholesale distribution. So thank you again. I forgot to mention that.
Wendy, as you know, not too long ago, we met with a local businessman down on three oh six in Lakeshore. And his consternation at the time was, well, his power was out, gentleman across the street, all the business across the street, they were on, he had to send people home. And we discussed that there, there was an issue that I think that time at the substation there at Lakeshore. So fast forward to the storm, and there was, as you may recall, there was a huge pole full, they had a lot of lines on it that fell on Bellflower Road. So it took probably four days, three, four days to get that back up. And I think the thinking then was, then the power would come back on, but it didn't. Subsequently, I was found out that there was a major issue at the substation. So is that issue being resolved has been was resolved then? And is there improvements going to be made to that substation so that we don't have another issue like that? Or and also, I know you've already told me you're doing a circuit-by-circuit, I think, evaluation of that whole area there as well. So hopefully, if there's an issue at that substation and the circuit-by-circuit review finds issues that we can get that those people down there satisfied.
So I did not bring my notes for that particular outage situation and the response to that. I do know that our customer support representative worked with our Power Quality Engineering Group to review the circuit, do a specialized circuit inspection to see if there are any remaining hazards that we missed during the storm. But to my knowledge, that particular substation, which is housed in City of Mentor on the lake, and all of the circuits have already been repaired. Customers are up, and any new issues that arise, we would encourage those customers to call in as new power outages. But, yeah, I would have to go back and and review. She has been communicating directly with that particular commercial customer. So once that happens, I kind of back off and let them do their jobs, so.
So some, as you know, I call you on a not not a regular basis, but somewhat regular basis. And it seems that a lot of the outages now are coming from faults and underground wiring faults. And I was looking at an article from the News Herald back in twenty-one where you attended a meeting in Perry. And it said that some of the the comments that were made by some of the township people there is that some of these electric underground electrical cables are now approaching thirty years. And the problem with that is that there is no easy way to determine where the faults are in these wires that are concealed underground. And what they're doing is asked, they asked for drawings, they also wanted to know if there's a program to provide them that will look to refix these aging underground lines. Now, in my case, our area, it's it's approaching fifty years. And it seems like a lot of times, at the end of the day, when there's a fault, there there's an outage, we find out it's a fault. And I know they're difficult. Is there a program with First Energy that is actively going out and replacing lines, complete lines, once they find a fault? They're just repairing when they find the fault?
So we repair and we replace. So but we also monitor performance of underground development. We call them UDs. And our end, we have a specific engineering team that monitors the performance because we have to report those performance numbers to the Public Utilities Commission. So we monitor that performance of those specific underground development- So we monitor that, performance of those specific underground development.
Do your, do your records show a list of feet or miles of underground wiring that you have and, and all the, and then the replacements you've made?
So, yes. But I guess the question that I would have back to you is, are you looking for just a general, because we have to maintain, we have to maintain those numbers to provide to the Public Utilities Commission. We, we, we report those, you know, outage numbers, and we have to identify to, to regards to what the cause was, whether it was overhead or an underground, but if you had a specific, then that's where I come in, or I would send it to someone in our engineering power reliability team to investigate if there is a chronic issue, and if it justifies replacement due to poor performance.
So there's not an actual program where you, like we do, say for roads, you know, they start to decay and we have to replace them, you don't actually have a program where after so many years, you start going and replacing based on the fact that they're probably going to start failing after so many years?
Because I don't manage that protocol, I don't know the answer to that, but I do know that we heavily review that performance, and if it justifies, then maybe that's part of the program that you're referencing.
I think the new phenomenon now is, maybe did happen too much in the past, but post-COVID, so many people are working at home, and the first thing I get is calls, and I'm, I'm trying to work, I'm out of power, you know, so that's the new, the new thing where there's, there's more emphasis now than ever on power, you know, so.
And I appreciate that frustration. I too am a mobile employee, so I can appreciate that, you know, when the power goes out, it's in our best interest to try to get residents up, because we do not charge, your meter does not spin, as the old adage would say, so. But again, and you and I have worked together for 10 years now, if there is an area that I can investigate.
In closing, I will say this, that probably the best investment I bought in, since I've owned my own in 40 years as a generator, so it's been a real blessing to have it, so. Thank you, Wendy.
You're welcome.
I guess, Wendy, I'll ask you, would you say that our grids are good and our plants have enough power? Our grids are good, they're, they don't need any kind of money to upgrade them, and that we have enough power on our plants, and basically trees are our biggest issue with power lines? Is that what, sound correct?
That's a loaded question.
I know.
We're always doing infrastructure improvements. I cannot speak to the PJM power grid reliability, we no longer in the generation business, so I don't have access to those numbers. But again, all I can say from First Energy's standpoint is that we are investing in improving power reliability through different areas, whether it's the Transmission 365 Program, we're doing distribution and subtransmission improvements constantly to improve performance, because, you know, if if I'm sending out, and I know you're going to ask me this, so I'm going to bring it up, we're doing a relocation of the lagoons, because they're basically falling into Lake Erie due to erosion. It's going to improve performance because we're relocating, but, you know, it's in the partnership of people reaching out to us and making us aware. That's why I always say, please call in a power outage, because it could be a loop that goes from your home to this pole on the street and only impact you, but if you don't call because you assumed your neighbor did, we're never going to know them, we're never going to send a truck to repair. So that's my short succinct answer there.
Good, thank you.
You're welcome.
And I just want to say one more thing, you always answer the phone, too, right in the middle of a tornado.
Gosh, I hope my boss is seeing this.
From all of us, actually, thanks.
Thank you, Mr. President. Can I just follow up on something that Mr. Councilman Kirchner had, had mentioned? Because I think we get a lot of questions on this, and I think it might be helpful to the public who might be watching this. We seem, we have a lot more of these instantaneous, very short outages. I wouldn't really necessarily call it an outage, it's more of a trip, and I know you've installed, that the utility has installed those trip saver mechanisms on the system. Is that primarily what accounts for those? I'm talking about those things that have, and they've been happening more frequently in the last few years, you know, just a couple ti, very recently, actually, like in our part of town.
Sure.
You know, two, three times in the last month.
So those are momentary interruptions, yeah.
But they happen, and then they, it comes back more annoying than, you know, causing any, any real trouble, but if you could explain that, because I, we get a lot of calls on that, it tends to suggest to a lot of our residents that the system is just unreliable overall, when in fact, I think there's a different explanation for that.
Thank you for that question. So those are what we call momentary interruptions. The PUCO definition is if the power goes out for five minutes or less, that's considered a momentary. What you're specifically referencing is when your power goes out, and maybe it drops to zero, not necessarily dims your lights, but drops to zero and then comes back on and forces you to reset all of your clocks, your old VCRs, if you still have them, I'm just saying. Those are, we have what's called an insta-trip system, where if a tree limb, and this is kind of falls through what Frank said, majority of the City of Mentor's vegetation maintenance for the four-year trimming is coming up in 2025, so you're probably seeing an increase of momentaries for tree limbs that might be hitting the power line due to a random wind, maybe somebody's climbing a tree, there could be a number of reasons. But the system is built so that when that tree limb hits the power line, if it burns off and falls off, you see a momentary interruption of power. It's inconvenient, but we don't have to send out a crew, and you still have power. If a tree interferes with that same power line, but it's going to be a true sustained power outage, then it's going to open or close one of our breakers or reclosers on the system, and then those specific customers are going to actually see a multi-minute outage. So the system is built to withstand those random tree branches, maybe an animal contact, but if it's something chronic, then we still encourage residents to call in through the 800 number or the online and say flickering, because there might be something that flickers on, three hours later, it does the same thing. We can come out, and it's usually Frank's people that come out to review that circuit and find a random branch that broke off, and it's actually sitting on, it's kind of stuck on the wire, so. Again, I'm just going to read something, because I kind of had a feeling this was, "Most of the distribution lines are protected by special devices that we have that are called breakers and reclosers." They're not, they not only cut off power when a permanent fault, such as a down line occurs, but they also sense those momentary faults, such as when a tree limb falls on the line, and you have that brief circuit interruption. Again, I, if, if there is something chronic, please call us and make us aware. Those are very hard to detect a lot of times, but I will say, in years past, when I had customer support, I had a dead bird on a wire, and I know you're going to laugh at that, but it was true. I said, well, there's your power outage, Mr. Customer, and he was charred to a T, so again, they're frustrating, but the system is built to withstand those momentaries.
Thank you.
Council?
Move to adjourn.
Before we do that, I want to thank you both for coming. You took time out of your schedules, you prepared this presentation, and I, I think it's gone a long way to explain to our residents what happens. We're going to be seeing, in my estimation, we're going to be seeing these strong storms every year now, because we have been seeing these strong storms. So I think in, in closing, from my perspective, I'd like to encourage all of our residents to look at their trees. Look where the power line is, it's at the top of the pole, and look and see where their trees are, and whether they should be thinking forward in terms of not causing the whole neighborhood that they live in to plunge into darkness because their trees or their limbs come down. Sometimes you could tell by looking at a tree, that's been there a long time, it may not have the foliage canopy that it used to have, and you know what, if that's the case, and you're looking at that tree, I hope that everybody becomes a good, a good neighbor and says, yeah, this is going to take a couple thousand dollars to get rid of this, but, you know, it's better than it falling on the power line or falling on their house, because a lot of these trees are over mature, they're 80, 100 feet high. So I'm, I'm hoping that from these two work sessions, that's the outcome. People look up at their trees and say, I got to be a good neighbor, because that's got to go. But I want to thank you guys for coming.
Thank you for the opportunity, and I'm sure I'll be hearing from you. Congratulations, chief.
Thank you.
Move to adjourn.
Second.